We're going to call the special council meeting for August 7, 2025 to order at 5:59 PM. And we're going to go into a 10-minute recess at this time. We are back from recess at 6:09 PM.
Where's the clerk? Is the recording on?
Okay, resuming the agenda, please stand, join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call.
Here.
DeShawn.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Moritz.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Graining permission for visitor to speak, we have Mr. White pre-requested at 10 minutes.
31125 Hill, Chris Drive. First thing I want to bring to attention to this council is why are we changing legislation 30 minutes before the council meeting? Isn't this supposed to be done 24 hours by the rules of procedure, 24 hours before it's voted on? Once again, are we violating, council violating their own rules of procedure? This is getting ridiculous that all these changes are made. And somebody made a statement a couple of minutes ago, if we're going to make changes, it has to be done in session. Okay? Two, the hiring of the council clerk, what a cluster. Okay? Today, they had an interview after they already picked somebody and made legislation out for that person prior to that young lady coming tonight to do her interview. I think that's a sham. There's no way that this should have ever took place. There should have been simple rules of interviewing processes following the rules. And matter of fact, the rules weren't followed again on August 1. When they had their first meeting, when in executive session without the president of the council or the law director present.
Why do you keep looking at me?
I'm sorry, I'll look the other way. Apologize. Okay. So basically, the rules of council were again violated by council members. When is this going to stop? When is it going to end? When are people actually going to come out and tell the truth, actually do something what's right for the city of Bucyrus? And not for personal agendas and attitudes and egos? Second of all, so basically, I think this ought to be tabled and completely redone so everyone has a fair chance. Because I don't think there was any fairness. Matter of fact, I heard from somebody who applied that they were asked certain questions that is violation of federal and state laws. Okay? By a member of that committee. Right there goes to show you that the people that were doing the interviewing, I don't think they knew what they were doing. Second of all, Bratwurst Festival, why isn't the agreement into the documents on demand? To me, if it's part of the legislation, the agreement is public record, and that should become part of documents on demand for public record. This city does not put what it's supposed to be putting on as public record. You know, I hear time and time again, all these people are just giving us a pain trying to do public records. Well, if public records were put on documents on demand or online, just like other municipalities do, the state of Ohio does, we wouldn't have these issues. Then they could just go and click and pull them off themselves. So I questioned the Bratwurst Festival thing. Third, why doesn't this city have a drug policy? Only for certain people? How many years has this city gone without a drug policy? Every employee in the city of Bucyrus? I mean, so I understand that, yes, certain people have drug policies, but not everybody has a drug policy. Okay? So if a non-union employee gets hurt on the job, are they required to drug test? Are they covered under, or does the city have to pick up the tab for that? 100% of the tab. So I think before this council decides to hire anybody, appoint anybody on any commission or committee or anything, that this city get their act together and get a drug policy in effect so it can be enforced. Okay? I don't care what people do on the outside. None of my business. Okay? I will abide by the state and federal laws. But this council needs to abide by the state and federal laws too. We need a drug policy in effect immediately to end all this stuff and actually make sure that everybody's covered correctly under what they need to be covered under. Or is the city liable for an employee that's not covered under Bureau of Workers' Comp that does illicit drugs, that it's not going to be covered by them? Thank you.
Any additional public participation? Seeing none, consideration of proposed legislation for the, oh, Vicki?
I would like, we need to do some amending to this agenda, just so we have, in my opinion, an accurate agenda of what we're going to be addressing. If you look under consideration of proposed legislation for the first time, you come under 226-2025, that was referred to the Plating Committee, not the Health and Safety. Then if you, excuse me, if you come down to 228-2025, which is the airport terminal, that is an ordinance, or that is a resolution, not an ordinance as it's stated. Then on page two, where we talk about refer back to originating committee, again, Resolution 226 is referred back to Plating, not Health and Safety.
Vicki, could you pause a second? I'm still catching up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm on Resolution 228-2025, making adjustments here. Okay, after the 228-2025, what were you at, Vicki?
Then we're under refer back to originating committee. And if you go down to Resolution 226, 2025, that's to be referred to the Plating Committee, not the Health and Safety. Are you?
Yeah.
Then, Proposed Ordinance 228-2025 is actually a resolution, not an ordinance. Then if you go under Committee Report on Pending Legislation, Proposed Resolution 226-2025, the report will come from Plating, not Health and Safety. Then if you go down to Proposed Ordinance 228-2025, that is a resolution rather than an ordinance. Then below that, where it says Ordinance Number 224-2025, that should be a resolution rather than an ordinance, or should state resolution rather than ordinance. Then the next page, down at the bottom, where it states Ordinance Number 228-2025 Airport Terminal, that should state resolution rather than ordinance. And other than misspellings, which I will not point out, those are the only edits that I see to the agenda.
Somebody want to make a motion to amend the agenda for Vicki's?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda has been modified.
I have a question. This 224, does anybody have a copy of it?
I do not.
Was it not just printed?
Apparently, it wasn't printed off.
I will say that I have a copy, but that was only the copy that was given out at the, yeah, Monday council meeting. That is that Mrs. Slater showed to me, or gave to me. Well, I think that would have been given to everyone. You were present, yeah, yes, yes. Yeah, and that's fine, understand.
So... Bratwurst Festival 225-2025, I have a copy.
No, 224.
Oh, 224.
Can we use that same one since we went into the discussion today and rehired her from Meyer? If the board gets changed, I don't know, you know what I mean? Because that was from that day.
I would defer to the lawyer.
So, you did hire her?
Yes. I'd like to request a...
But I don't know what you were doing.
Huh?
Well, before we even do that, though, Vicki emailed me today and essentially the one that it wrote before the council or the ad hoc committee meeting, which didn't have a name in it initially. The name was added after the decision was made. I had presented to the law director. The law director made the edits so it was compliant with the format. But then, when I asked for corrections on that 224-2025, I got a paper that just has Miranda's ordinances, or Miranda's resolution, which was 202-2024, and then corrections and changes to that.
So I'd looked up the old ordinance from Miranda's hiring, and it was significantly different in the wording than the...
This is correct.
... ordinance that was passed around Monday night. Did you notice that, Vicki, too?
Did you not look at my email that I sent out today at 1:11 PM in response to Mrs. Slater's email asking if I would please give her, or get her the legislation that I'm editing when it's complete? Now, I will say that this email did come in Wednesday at 6:10 PM. As I indicated to everybody through emails, yesterday was my day to take my grandchildren home. I spent 10 hours on the road, so I did not get to the legislation until today. And I sent my suggested revisions, whatever you want to call them, out to everybody at 1:11 PM.
My theory is, is that the edits did not happen. So shall we then forth-table that?
From my quick review of what we've just been handed, the edits that I suggested, which there were edits to every piece of legislation, none of them were addressed. So I'm just pointing that out. So what we have in front of us are the original drafts.
I'd be fine with, well, given that this was all just printed off here, just mere moments before the meeting, and there hasn't been extensive time to review, I'd be okay with tabling all of the legislation on the agenda tonight, if somebody wanted to make a motion for that.
But we need to be getting a immediate special council meeting. We have the Bratwurst Festival piece. We have our airport terminal. We've already delayed that from our Monday meeting.
What's going on with this legislation? Because don't we have a law clerk down in the law clerk's office that's supposed to be helping out with getting this stuff ready? And, I mean, we also got Clarissa over there helping Brandon. I mean, what's, why is all this legislation taking so long?
He didn't come in until 1 o'clock this afternoon.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Slater.
Can I please get clarification?
Could you speak up, Mrs. Slater?
Can I please get clarification? Are we supposed to be helping to write our ordinances, or are we supposed to solely rely on the law director?
I believe that the committee chairs shall and can work directly with the law director and prepare legislation.
Okay. So I think it's about time we stop pointing fingers at people and just work together to try to find a solution. And because of that, and the unprecedented stuff that has just came up, I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session for consulting with a, for conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject to pending or intimate court action per Ohio Revised Code, Section 101-22G3, to include all of the voting members of council, the city auditor, the mayor, and the safety service director.
So since this is a special meeting, that would have had to been advertised to have the executive session on the agenda.
It would have to have been advertised for the reason, the reason is listed on this agenda, and the reason of that is the hiring of the council clerk.
So we specifically did not have an executive session one night because executive session and the...
Reasoning wasn't stated, sir. The reasoning wasn't stated why. Not because it was an executive session, but the reason and the material regarding the executive session was not stated. The reasoning and material regarding the executive session is stated. And any further more input on this matter, I believe, should be turned over to the president pro temp, because this is a direct conflict of interest, seeing that you are the one with the pending litigation on this council.
Going by past practice, I'm going to state that we can't go into executive session tonight due to it not having been on the media notice that was sent out, since this is a special meeting, can only have the items that were specifically on the agenda.
I do agree with that.
Mm-hmm. I, yeah.
So you'd have to reschedule a special meeting and... Mr. Myers?
I've heard mention of tabling all of this. I'm absolutely opposed to that. Let's stay here. Let's get this shit done that we've been, we're tasked by our residents that we represent to do. Let's get it fixed then tonight. That's why we're here, that's why this meeting was called. I'm tired of us continuing to push stuff down the road and not fix it.
Brian, I agree.
This stuff's pretty simple.
Did you say it takes about 20 minutes to get it fixed?
Yeah, there's...
But we don't know what we're wanting to do.
So let's go through each one of them, and let's discuss them. Let's have a discussion on them, let's fix them.
These are really simple stuff. Like, this one says Plating, or this one says Health and Safety instead of Plating. Yeah, 226.
Can we start from the beginning in the order in which these ordinances were supposed to be written, to keep it in a logical order, please?
Yeah.
Start with 225.
That's not the first one. 2234, but I don't have...
That I don't have either.
224.
Yeah, go ahead and go print them off.
So, are we voting to table that today?
No.
Okay.
Well, you can make whatever motion you want.
Is 224 the hiring of the council clerk? I don't think that, I don't think that was requested from the council, was it?
No. I'll just joke that.
Was that, was that legislation requested from an ad hoc committee? Okay. I don't think that that should have come from the ad hoc. I think the recommendation should have been made to full council. Then full council should vote on it.
Let's do it.
Then request legislation.
But can't wait to solve the agenda.
No. The whole reason we called this meeting. Well, let's pull up the agenda. Not the agenda.
224 is on the agenda.
You can amend the agenda, but where is hanging out on the door?
I have a copy of the meeting notice.
So do I understand correctly that what we're saying should have been done was...
City council meeting, committee meeting, special meeting. Discussion about hiring the council clerk, that is on the city council special meeting announcement. We can discuss that if it's on the agenda, and I've got the agenda right here. And that is hiring of the council clerk.
It just says the date and time, and he doesn't say what the items...
He found it. Yeah, I found it. So, yeah, we can discuss it.
Who's approving the agendas?
That's the council president's trouble.
Since we're waiting on the 224, do you want to look at the 225 while Lisa's printing it off?
Or to the law director's point, do we want to take care of 224 with room in numerical order? I think what he's suggesting is that the committee report to the full council on what happened, and let the full council request the legislation. Mrs. Slater, do you want to go through kind of what you did at the committee with the same kind of report you had at the committee meeting?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just, I'm trying to catch up here. So, in the announcement, it says we're discussing the hiring clerk, correct?
Correct.
And that's not required to be posted, just the time and date, not the substance?
No, it's a special meeting, so the topics have to be listed in the special meeting notice 24 hours in advance, which it was.
To the, to the news, but the posting on the, on the council chambers?
The rule is that it has to be put in places like the, like one of, it doesn't have to include all of them, it can be in a newspaper of general circulation. Was the notice sent out to the Telegraph Forum in Crawford County now and all that stuff? Then, then we're fine.
What, what, what time was the email sent with the media notice? Because I'm not seeing it here in my email. Yesterday.
It was seven.
Been coming from Lisa.
8:13 AM, Wednesday, August 6.
8:13, August 6. What's the title, what's in the title, the subject of the email?
Please announce special council meeting.
Was I included on that email? Is my name on there? Because I'm not seeing it in my email.
No.
I actually know it's occurred on here.
Yeah, you're not on there.
Nope.
So, yeah, I wasn't provided a copy of the media notice. So just seeing this 224-2025, well, it says 224-25, that's a error in itself. Okay, Vicki, I'm seeing the email you sent with the edits, and you included the one from Miranda, the 202-2025. You did not use this one as your working one that you were making edits to.
Correct.
So there's, I mean, it's significantly different.
The conference journal just made the caption and the title shorter.
Can you speak up, Mrs. Slater?
Is anyone else having a hard time hearing me?
Yeah. Yeah.
Probably because I'm facing this way and not towards the mic, but it's hard for me to shove everything in a corner and still be present on the camera, so my apologies.
So, so the working copy that we have, that was just handed out, is not the copy that Vicki had made the edits to in the email?
Because I had taken the previous one as a guideline, and I made the caption or the title, whatever you want to call it, shorter, but all of the content is there, it's just in a different, it's not in the same order.
So you wrote this?
I was on the ad hoc committee, and I wrote it and presented it at the meeting.
Why didn't you just use the Miranda hired ordinance and just change it to that? Just change the name on it?
Changes, I guess.
Mr. President?
Mr. Myers?
From going off of this one that was just handed out, I've got five things that I've seen that need addressed. Would you like me to go through them?
Sure.
Very top, resolution is spelled wrong, and then it would be 224-2025. There's two of them. Under Section 1, the commencing date would be later now, because this was done for Monday. So at this point, it would be August 11, would be my assumption for next Monday. The bottom of page 1 passed on the seventh day, not the fourth day of August. And then that same change would be under the signatures on page 2.
And you're coming up with the August 11 date. How did you arrive at that?
Well, she had said she was available immediately, and this is Thursday night, and so that would be our next workday.
But when are we going to be passing? Is the law director saying that we could pass this legislation tonight? We don't have to? Okay. All right. Okay. Are those the only...
That's all that's...
Okay.
No, I didn't. You said we could address it this evening. You can address it, but the actual referral for legislation has to come from full council. You guys have to report who your recommendation is. Council makes the decision that requests legislation made in official.
Right.
Yeah, it has to be approved by full council.
Which is good. But it's going to need changing, because that was...
And I understand that what we're saying is that the ad hoc is to go to a council meeting and state this is our recommendation?
You can just make it, like, you could just make...
Make it, like you could just make the recommendation as the ad hoc here, which is what I'm trying to do.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand. So you are saying that tonight, this resolution two-twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five can be addressed.
Can be addressed, yes.
By this special council, but not voted upon.
Correct, because you haven't requested the legislation yet.
But if we request it right now, it can be voted on this evening because it's on the agenda, correct?
If we take a recess and I get it done.
How long do you need?
Are you guys done bitching about stylistic differences?
Okay, first off.
Yeah, point of war, Mr. Goebrich, you can't use that word in these chambers.
Are you guys done fussing about stylistic differences?
Fussing, I don't appreciate.
Let's just work together, please.
Yes.
Now, reference this. Legislation, I'm still waiting on a. Legal opinion that I requested on July thirty-third.
Kurt, you sent me a text. There's a form that you fill out down in my office if you want a legal opinion. Sending me a text that had misspelled words in it doesn't count. In fact, I didn't even read it until today because I just ignore your texts.
I have some edits to make in addition to what Mr. Myers.
Yes, Vicky.
Nowhere in the legislation does it refer to. The. Ending date. Because keep in mind that this individual will serve as our council clerk, starting the eleventh, that that's the date we're using. And it ends December thirty-first of this year.
You're correct, Vicky. I did not add an ending date. My apologies.
So that needs to be in there. Let's see what else.
Can I make a, Mr. President? Mr. President?
Mrs. Slater.
Can I just make a request of you? As the president of this body, what do you wish to see happen with the council clerk? Can you state it on the record as the president?
I, yes, I would, I would like to see, I don't believe that the. And this is what I stated at the ad hoc meeting on August first, when I. Addressed the.
Is this debate before you guys make a determination?
No, it's not a debate. I'm just stating what I said.
Okay, well, you need to give up the gavel.
I'm not giving up the gavel.
Then you can't talk. Are we in discussion?
I'm not debating. I'm just answering a question that Mrs. Slater asked.
Okay.
What I'd like to see happen. Is. Instead of just an ad hoc committee of three people interviewing candidates without the council president there, which has never happened. The council president's always been in the interview process. I'd like to see council as a whole. Interview the candidates with the council president present because essentially with the three-person ad hoc committee, you can have basically two people coming up with. Who the clerk is. And since council is to appoint a clerk, I, I don't feel that that's right. I feel that that's just two people. Appointing a clerk. So I'd like to see the, the interviews re-conducted as full council. With council president, then that way we're adhering to past practice where the council president was always, because you got, you got to think you're going to have. The candidates are going to have questions about the job that only the direct supervisor would have knowledge of. So seeing that, I'd, I'd be fine with tabling this and. Doing things a little bit differently here.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Slater.
So just for clarification, the steps that you would like to see us to take, is to table this?
Table it.
May I please finish?
Mrs. Slater, yes, yes, you have the floor, Mrs. Slater.
I would like, you're stating that you would like to see this tabled. You would like us to take all of the candidates and. Re-interview them.
As, as full council.
Okay.
With the council president present.
At this point, it's, this is my, may I, may I make a statement?
Yes, Mrs. Slater.
At this point, I don't think it's helpful to point fingers at anybody because I believe. I'm new at this. Right? We're all human. And this all has been unprecedented to the way this has been handled from the outset. That being said, I think, my opinion. Is that we're probably also liable about the fact that we never even asked for a posting to be made and that a full posting really wasn't made.
I recommended we do that.
I do too. Should. It's terrible and it's. Stinks because we don't have a council clerk, but. I'm very much against the sunken cost fallacy that we just keep going the course because we've invested so much time in it. Maybe we can use this as a way of. Quelling disagreements to, from the outset, make a motion for the posting to occur.
Cause there, I, I would agree with the second posting because we did have additional candidates come in after that noon deadline on Tuesday.
It's not even about that. It's the fact that we never, I mean, truly, we never asked for. Authorized or anything there to be a posting in the first place. And I'm not pointing fingers because there was, I'm sure, things that weren't. Done in precedent past that. It's just saying like, why don't we just use this opportunity to come together and do it how it's been done? And I hate it because we've interviewed everybody and we'd have to ask them to come back in. And I've also stated that I'm not really for Lisa being a clerk long-term because. It's not fair to her to have her do two jobs and try to squish it into a forty-hour work week.
Could I ask the mayor for input? Cause I think he, he met with a former council president. A few days ago and she let him know some things regarding past practices, the council clerk could hiring, could you? Mr. Mayor, could you enlighten us as to what? What the past practice she said was? Could you turn your mic on?
With a clerk?
Didn't she?
What, what the, what the past council president had stipulated that is that the chair, the chairpersons. Used to do their own minutes. Of each committee. The committee chair would do their own minutes and then they would turn around and turn them in to the clerk, the council clerk. And, and to stipulate, so you know who it was, it was Sis Love. I called Sis Love up and she came in and, and come into my office. And we had a, we had a conversation. And I asked her how the, how it was done in the past.
Now, I was in there for that meeting. How did you know what was talked about in that meeting? Cause you weren't there.
I was told.
Okay. Well, let me offer some enlightenment because you're asking the mayor to talk about something that wasn't talked about. We didn't talk about the past. Lisa was there.
I thought to hire, I thought.
I was there.
I thought.
Mayor was there. Tommy, you were there, weren't you?
Just for a minute, I had to go.
Correct.
What else was said? What else was said?
That's really none of your business. You weren't invited.
Wait, but, but we're only allowed to talk about hiring of the clerk, so it doesn't matter about anything that was said that doesn't have to do with hiring of the clerk.
But I, I thought, I thought she said that.
Order, sir. If it's not about hiring of the clerk.
It is about that.
You seem pretty sure you know what was talked about.
I thought she told you that in the past, the council president was always included in the interviews.
No, I don't remember that.
She didn't say that?
No.
You seem pretty sure you know what was talked about. Could I ask for order of the day? Either we're here to take care of this stuff or we're not going to take care of it. Which is it?
I guess I'd like to ask the opinion of the law director, what should we do? Accounting for sunken thought, cost theory?
Uh, my original recommendation was that we scrap the improper posting because it was improper. Going by that, I say we start over. I say that if we don't, the ad hoc was created and allowed for anybody to volunteer. Erin wasn't here.
Present?
Wasn't present. That's not really fair, especially because it's not her fault because she was stuck. Council president volunteered and there was no motion to appoint him to it.
But other people were allowed on without getting a motion. Other people were just willfully allowed to be on it. Nobody.
It was all voted on together and then you said you wanted to be on there. So Kevin. Said, okay, fine, we can vote you on there. We had the vote. Nobody motioned for you because nobody likes you. Nobody wants to work with you. It's true.
Order of the day, please.
It's true. I'm giving my legal opinion. Now. I think that because of that, the ad hoc was done correctly. I think requesting legislation was from the ad hoc is improper. I think you should report to the council, let the council vote, talk about the candidates and what your personal opinions of each member was and who was in the interview process. And let the council make a decision. But. I would recommend that we start over because the original posting wasn't done right in the first place.
I'd be fine with totally starting over. And I think that all members, since this is council hiring its clerk, I, I think it shouldn't be an ad hoc committee. It should be all members. Meeting with all the candidates in executive session.
There is nothing wrong with there being an ad hoc for it.
Even for the last two hundred years, it's always been an ad hoc.
Doesn't matter if it's mad hoc, we all still can be on it, whether it's mad hoc or not.
Well, see, the, the thing with an ad hoc is you can actually put more people on an ad hoc than, than council. So you could bring in like. So some of the members here. Aren't running again and are only going to be on for another like five and a half months. You could actually with the ad hoc, put others on it that are coming in potentially on the next council term next year. And those members are going to be on for at least twenty-four months. So it, it would make sense that since this clerk could potentially be serving throughout their twenty-four months. That you may want to get input from those. And, and Mr. Zion Hickman was, he was put on an ad hoc in twenty twenty-three.
What the council president is saying is correct. You can put more people on that.
We allowed people who were definitely already in or they were already, yeah, they had nobody against them.
Mr.
Actually.
The three at large number.
President.
Mr. President may ask a question.
Mr., yeah, Mr. Goebrich.
I'm just curious. Did you intentionally Shanghai the council Facebook page and intentionally post an improper? It, no, it, it's relevant. Did you intentionally Shanghai the council clerk or the council Facebook page and improperly post the meeting or the job description specifically in an orchestrated plan to cause this exact problem? As a power of.
I am unfamiliar.
Sue the city for it.
I am unfamiliar with what the word Shanghai means as a verb.
Commandeering, hijacking, taking over total, complete administrative control with no other oversight.
I've got a dictionary downstairs if you want.
All of my. Actions were. Not in an attempt to Shanghai anything.
Mr. President?
I was legitimately working to, towards.
Mr. President.
Helping this council get a clerk hired.
Did you do it upon the request of council? Because that is an action of council. Did you wait and get it, have it done?
No, I did post the posting without council's.
Mr. President?
Directive.
Mr. President?
I did post the posting without council's directive. Mrs. Slater. You have the floor, Mrs. Slater.
We're, this is just, I'm just confirming. The last time that the council clerk was hired after Todd Hill abruptly left. You were the council president at that time, correct? And you knew to take. To wait until a request was made for the posting?
I didn't know anything at the time. I was just.
But that's what happened last time, correct?
From that experience, you knew prior to that you had to wait till council request is what she just asked?
There's nothing in the Ohio vice code that says that the president can't post a job opening when the job is open. The only thing that says in the Ohio vice code is, is that council.
Okay.
Appoints.
Mr. President, my last question, and it's a simple yes or no. Did you last time wait to get direction or directive? From the body of council to hire the council clerk, yes or no?
I don't remember exactly how it went down last time.
Okay, I'm sure we can check for the record, but.
And I'm still waiting on an answer for my question. Did you do this on purpose?
I did not do anything to intentionally Shanghai the process.
Mr. President, order of the day, please.
While we're still in the edits.
I would like to make a motion. To table resolution two-two-four dash twenty twenty-five. Indefinitely. I, would you like me to do it by division or would you like me to state my entire motion?
Mrs. Slater has made a motion to table resolution two-twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five indefinitely. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Spiegel has seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is tabled. Okay, moving on to edits on.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Slater?
On the council agenda, does, or on the agenda states that hiring the council clerk is to be discussed, therefore I am asking. For a motion to direct the council president in his administrative function to make a posting for the hiring of the council clerk. Subject to accepting applications immediately. And retroactively from the time that we had started it the first time, could someone, does someone know when we, the initial posting was on July nineteenth or something like that? When did you make the Facebook post?
I don't remember the day, but I would suggest that your motion have an end date.
That's what I was going to do. Whatever the date that was posted on the council, I can pull it up real quick. To. One second here. I mean.
I would recommend that we don't make it retroactive.
Don't make it retroactive?
If we're going to start over, we need to start over.
Okay, all right. So I'll make a motion. To announce, to have, to direct, authorize and direct the council president to make a posting. For the hiring of the council clerk, starting effective immediately and going through. Is a week enough? August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
What, any time on that date?
By the end of business day. So was that five o'clock?
Five PM.
So are you expecting all the people that have already applied and been interviewed to reapply?
That's what I was stating. That's why I wanted to do a retroactive.
Retroactive because their applications are already with the city. They shouldn't have to do it again.
It's messy if you're trying to start over because you screwed up from the outset to make it retroactive and try to bring some of the screw up into what you're trying to fix.
Accepting applications until, don't, don't say when they. Accepting applications until, don't, don't say when they started. That way we've got both applications, but accepting applications until a certain date.
No, but this is a continuance.
What if you say you're opening the window back up with a new end date?
Just put the posting out right. Have them, if they want the job, they can reapply.
And I would like to request that everybody that has submitted one be officially notified by the city of U.S.A.R.'s that their application is no longer being considered and if they are interested, they must reapply and state the damn reason why.
That would be perfect.
Um, but also is there a reason why we have the pay as currently budgeted listed here? Because isn't that our top pay?
There is no top and bottom pay for that position.
It's just a stated pay.
Because we had, I mean, we start them lower so we can give them a raise if it's working.
I hate to say it.
We don't start them at the top.
Well, I think what's happened in the past is when the interviewers are interviewing the person getting interviewed, they kind of judge their experience level and then they kind of set where they feel it is and then they can move up from there. Because Miranda was started out lower than what the predecessor.
Mr. President, I believe the issue though is that it's been posted that way.
Well, how do you want it posted? I can post it however you want it. You could, you could put in the posting, you could put pay to be determined by council. You could put that in there.
Mr. Law Director, what do you think is the best option for the pay issue?
For the pay issue? You can put it in, you can say it's negotiable. You can say it's dependent on experience. You can say that the top is a million dollars. A negotiable below that. It really doesn't matter as long as you don't lock yourself.
What about pay rate between $21 and $26?
Pay rate, I would say negotiable upon experience. Because somebody's never been in an office before. It's in the legislation what the last person was being paid, not...
Now, y'all do need to take into consideration. Being up here sucks. If you want good applicants, you shouldn't open the door by saying, "Well, we're not going to pay you." And that's just good advice.
I, I'll be honest, there's been people telling me they would not take the job for the 2525.
Use the word negotiable.
Unfortunately for me, what my thought would be, why would these people want to come up and suggest themselves on this again? After all, this just went through.
I wouldn't. If I were them.
I mean, it, it really sucks. If that door has been opened up, we can't put it back together. Can't shut, I mean, we'll all get together and do it again. Who would want to?
I don't disagree with you.
I don't disagree with you either, but if we're going to start over to avoid any legal liability, we need to start over to avoid legal liability.
Okay, so posting of the job immediately, accepting applications now through August 14th, 2025 at 5:00 PM. Pay is negotiable.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Slater?
I'd like to amend my motion to include everything you stated and also I would like to set a date for those interviews to occur. Let me get it done one, one rep.
Could you speak up? I didn't hear that last part.
I'm sorry. I've been told I shout normally, so that's why I try to take my tone down. My voice typically carries. What I'd say to it was, I'm asking that we state a date that the interview will occur. We're scheduling them on a date and then a time slot would be
Given to them upon...
In the posting. That way we can knock that out.
You want to schedule an interview date in the posting already?
Correct.
What date are you thinking on that?
Monday, the 18th.
Yeah?
Now, before we make anything, um...
Now, that's Bratwurst Festival week.
No, it's not.
Oh, it's not? When's the Bratwurst Festival?
14th, 15th, or 16th.
That's the week after.
The third full weekend of August every year.
I would like to ask a question of the law director.
Go ahead.
If we are disbanding and restarting, do we also need to disband and restart the ad hoc committee for?
Correct.
Okay, so...
Restart means restart.
All right. Well, I believe that we would need to conclude that first before we vote on a motion to reconvene, correct?
Yeah, you'd have to disband the ad hoc.
So I'm making a motion to disband the ad hoc committee for hiring a council clerk.
Is there a second?
I'm gonna second that.
Hey, it's gotta be somebody on the committee doing it.
Oh.
No, because the council is who set the... Okay, then, Mr., Mrs. Slater made a motion to disband the ad hoc committee for clerk hiring, seconded by Councilman Moretz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Ad hoc for clerk hiring has been disbanded.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Slater?
I'd like to make a motion to direct and authorize the council president to make a posting for the council clerk. And I would like that posting to run from immediately to August 14th, close of business day, 5:00 PM. I would like to have the, the posting should state that the pay is negotiable. And I would like to state that the interviews will be conducted on Monday, August 18th.
At what time?
That time will be given?
That time will be given
Prior to that date.
Prior to that date, yeah, that works.
Mary, 14th, are you guys open till 5:00 o'clock and close at 12 over here? So...
You close it now? All right, I'd like to amend my motion from 5:00 PM close of business to 12:00 PM close of business, please.
And we're going to be, we're going to be in and out all day, so...
That's okay because we weren't, we weren't going to have to do anything on that.
Noon?
Noon.
Okay, so Mrs. Slater's motion was to authorize the council president to post the council clerk position immediately and go through August 14th, 2025 till noon. Pay is negotiable. And interviews will be conducted on August 18th. And the specific time will be given prior to that date.
If you want the law director here for that, you're going to do a different day than the 18th.
Different day than the 18th?
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Me? Or Mr. Starnes?
Please don't call him because we're going to be out of the office.
Okay.
So I could call him, but since I do have administrative capacity in the ORC, I could do the...
Why don't I send them all letters detailing the reason and telling them that we would request that they reapply?
Well, we're setting, setting the times, but I would just say whoever's the head of the ad hoc, you already set up the ad hocks.
No, no, ad hoc's disbanded.
That ad hoc is disbanded.
Right. They're gonna create a new...
Oh, they're gonna create a new ad hoc?
Yes. Because that's what you do. That's the process to...
Okay, I would like to make a, a motion, or an amendment to my motion for the interviews to conduct on Tuesday, August 19th. That would also give the clerk time to call them and we should probably plan a block of time.
You could probably do a what?
We should probably plan a block of time on Tuesday, August 19th.
Well, it's during the council meetings.
Yeah, we have a council meeting that night.
Right, I'm saying during the business day.
You want to have the interviews right before the council meeting?
You're going to need a half an hour for each interview. And if we have already interviewed six people, right, there's three hours. And if you're expecting anymore, it's going to be more than three hours.
So you're not going to be able to give them a block of time?
What about like after lunch?
Like noon?
1:00?
Starting at noon or 1:00?
My recommendation would be choose what time you'd like to finish. Schedule your first person for a half an hour before you want to finish and then you can move each one a half hour earlier. That way you don't have large gaps of time that you're sitting here and not having somebody in an interview.
Well, if we need time, I would like to be done at close of business, so 5:00 PM.
It's a public hearing that night, too.
So I'd say your first or your last interview should start at 4:30 or 4:00 and then work up backwards from that.
So what do we just say from, uh, the perspective time from 1:00 to 5:00? Or when the interviews are being conducted? Just for a time block.
Could we just put afternoon of the 19th?
I was only thinking 1:00 because I know usually like administrations out 1:00 to 2:00 or some, or 12:00 to noon. I don't know, whatever you guys, 12:00 to 1:00. I don't know.
1:00 to 5:00 would only allow you eight slots and if the six people that already interviewed come back and any extras, you might be over that.
No, you have an hour buffer, I guess, before the public hearing. We can do noon. I mean, I'm not opposed to doing noon. It's just going to make for a very long time.
So Mrs. Slater, can you restate the exact motion?
Yes.
Sorry, before you do, should we just list that day? Because if we have to start in the morning because we got 12 candidates.
Okay, all right, that's fine. So I would like to restate my motion to state that I'm authorizing and that the council is authorizing and directing the council president to post the council clerk's position starting, accepting applications starting immediately and through Thursday, August, what was it, 14th?
14th.
At 12:00 PM. And interviews will be scheduled on Tuesday, August 19th.
And the pay is negotiable.
And the pay is negotiable. Thank you. And that's my motion.
Okay, Mrs. Slater has made a motion to authorize a job posting immediately through August, August 14th at 12:00 PM. Pay is negotiable and interviews will be on August 19th. Just that or...
Just point blank, just in case.
Okay, August 19th. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Sherrick seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, that passed.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Slater?
I would like to make a motion to convene an ad hoc committee for the hiring of the council clerk.
To put together an ad hoc committee?
Correct.
Okay, let me think who I want to put on this thing. I put all the council on it and I would offer Ray Thadoff and Robert Taylor to be on it as well.
I don't know if all the councils put on, is that then considered a council meeting?
You'd have a special council meeting and go into executive session, just as the ad hoc just did.
So the proper procedure is to vote on his appointments.
Mr. Law Director?
Yes.
Uh, and anyone who knows, I guess. When, because I wasn't here for this, when the ad hocks for the other ad hocks were convened, how did that occur? Was there suggestions or was there appointments? They're not the main committees, they're the ad hocks.
So council president is the one who makes the appointments and they're approved by council as a...
Okay.
Mr. President, I also got down, round smaller.
Same.
I'm also not interested in continuing because you've wasted enough time.
And as stated before, I mean, I'm not interested. My term's going to end the end of this year and I'm not rerunning.
And previously, the others were offered the spot but weren't forced to have the spot and they were in the room. Mr. Hickman and them were actually here to be able to give their input as to whether or not they wanted to be placed on a committee.
Both Zion and I were asked if we wanted to serve.
Well, I definitely think there should be more than three and fewer than seven.
The thing, the, the thing with a three-person ad hoc committee is, and they told us it's down to Ohio Municipal League.
No, three persons shouldn't have it.
You shouldn't have a three-person committee because then if one person calls up another person, then did a meeting just to cure and that's a quorum because it only takes two to make a quorum. So you really want five so you don't have a tie.
We'll put Taylor and Ray on, these three.
I'm, I can't do it during the day.
Well, now, you're going to want to check though with them because you know Brad works during the day and I'm sure
Robert works during the day.
Robert works during the day and he, they're both work out of town.
I actually am working days that day, so that would leave me out. No, that day. That's one of my day shift days.
What about doing these interviews on Sunday on the 17th, just so that, you know, everybody's not working and stuff?
My only worry is that if, Mr. President, my only worry is that if we're the council, the council clerk pro tem, her, she's not going to be in office because she will be off with...
But she wasn't here when the other interviews were happening.
No, no, no. I'm talking about for scheduling purposes. If we close on the 14th, they're not open Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or you know, Thursday, Friday.
Holy smokes.
You're not closed all day on Friday, are you?
Yes, half a day.
Half a day.
Oh, half day? Okay, okay. Just half day on Friday. So that would leave you...
Well, I'm, I'm going to be the one that reaches out and lets all these people know.
Why don't you just hire somebody?
Not how this works.
Department head.
No. Pretty sure we've had this entire conversation.
Well, I, sis, sis called all them people when they were interviewing when Todd...
She was also on the ad hoc.
Can somebody up here do their job and volunteer for this committee?
I mean, if, if, I'm not going to have a pity party and, you know, be sour, so I will volunteer as well.
Great, we got two.
And I'd like to be on it, so there's three.
Is there anybody else that's open during the day?
What about having a mayor? Do you want to be on it?
I'll pass.
What about the law director? Since they'll be working with them directly.
I'm not being on the ad hoc.
So we got Clarissa, Erin, me, well, myself, not Mr. Me.
Right, that was, that was a mess up before.
Mr. Moretz?
I'm on day shift. I cannot.
Even on the Sunday?
Sunday I could. Well, depending what Sunday.
Well, hold up, but you're looking at Sunday as a, a family day and you don't know that you're going to be able to get people to interview on a Sunday.
It's unusual, especially because the job doesn't require working on Sunday.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's not.
What if we include the pro tem clerk? Only if she wants to.
On Tuesday, you'll be out of state?
Possibly.
So she, oh yeah, because she's got big things happening.
I might be back by Tuesday, but...
What, what other administrators have experienced hiring? Kaylee?
I, I, I've experienced hiring people in my private capacity, being a business owner.
I wasn't stating that against you. I'm asking for additional people. Kaylee, you've hired people here in the city? Okay. Well, then maybe there's one. If she, if she's willing.
Nah, we're not putting the auditor on a clerk hiring committee.
Why not?
Why not?
Why not?
Why not?
Anybody called Robert up yet?
Well, it doesn't have to be on.
Kaylee, will you do it? Great, we're up to...
That's court.
You want me to message Ray and Robert and ask Mr.?
What about Tommy?
I see you ducking back there. Tommy's the fifth.
Okay, there we go, five people.
I'm not doing it on Sunday, though.
No.
Is that okay with you, Mr. President?
What's that?
For expeditious reasons.
What are you talking about? I, I'm writing down who's on this committee right now. So Mrs. Slater, Ms. Sherrick, myself, the auditor, Louis, Mr. Starnes.
Did you say Erin? Okay, I didn't hear it. I thought you only said four names. I apologize.
Well, there's five, but I don't, we don't... Well, there's five, but I don't, we don't know about. How about we just put Mr. Thidoff and Robert on it and then if they back out, we still got a quorum with the five.
Well, we could make them, we could say contingent.
Add them if one of them.
They could be invited into your executive session.
Yeah.
They just wouldn't be a voting.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. So, someone wants to make a motion to form the ad hoc committee with Mrs. Slater, Mrs. Sherrick, myself, auditor Louis, and Mr. Starnar?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Slater made a motion, Mr. Maritz seconded. All favors.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, that is formed, so now we're back to the job posting. I forget, did we vote on? We did vote on that?
Yeah, we did.
So, we're still going with the Monday, the 19th?
Tuesday, the 19th.
Tuesday, the 19th.
Tuesday.
At a time to be determined, the pay is supposed to be negotiable.
Correct.
Basic fund of experience of this negotiation.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Slater?
I would just like to thank everybody for working together and making concessions and realizing that we're all human and we're just trying to do the best we can.
And I would really like to thank Mrs. Stuckman for all the extra work she's had to do the last week because it's been quite intensive, the amount of work she's had to do. And Mr. Starnar for helping.
I was gonna say Tommy and Lisa both.
Really stepped up.
Mr. President?
Mr. Myers?
Question on the remaining four pieces of legislation. It's my understanding that all four of them have significant changes that they need to have them. No. No.
No, you shook her head now.
Okay.
We'll go with Vicky.
Well, I think the big one is the airport one. That's the major one. We've got somebody here from the Airport Commission. And the Bratwurst Festival. And I was gonna recommend table in the 227 anyway, just because of the incident that happened at the last meeting at the podium.
No, no. Okay, we're gonna look at 225-2025. That's the next on the agenda.
Thank you.
That is the Bratwurst Festival.
Okay, let's look at the 225-2025. I'm looking at it.
Now, therefore, there's no need for that. I realize it doesn't change, but there's no need for now, therefore, because you have no whereas clauses. So, that can be stricken. And Mr. Goldberg, you should have copies of all my suggestions.
I've got it ready.
Okay.
You missed one.
Looking at what we have done in the past, where in the caption, where it says "for", insert the words "at a cost of $8,000". Again, eliminate the word "for", insert "at a cost of", section one, same thing, remove the word "for", insert "at a cost of", and then add, after the $8,000, the verbiage "is hereby approved" to complete the sentence. And that's it.
On section one, help me understand the verbiage, "that the authorizing and directing", why?
"That the authorizing and directing of the service safety director to enter to..."
Yes, okay, it's necessary. Okay, I got it.
Yeah, yeah.
I understand now.
Okay, so we have the change of, in the first paragraph, after services and before "eight", we're changing, striking the word "for" and putting "at a cost of", then below that, "now, therefore" is completely stricken. Then under section one, after "four" and before the word "the", inserting "at a cost of".
You're striking the word "for".
Striking "for".
My mistake. We're striking the word "for" that's between services and "the", inserting "at a cost of", after, same paragraph, after the $8,000.
Is hereby approved.
Is hereby approved. I'm sorry, comma, is hereby approved. And that's it. Does somebody wanna make a motion to amend that legislation?
I'll move.
Second.
Oh, wait a minute, I see another typo. Under section two, "in as much as all", a continuous run-on word. There should be a space between "in" and "a" and between "a" and, or.
"In as much",
She's a little.
That's an actual word.
That's a real word.
Oh, I learned something new today.
We all are learning.
Okay. A motion to amend the legislation was requested by Mr. Myers, seconded by Mrs. Slater. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Legislation 225-2025 is amended. Moving on to resolution 226-2025 for edits.
Strike out health and safety up at the right-hand corner. It's the plating committees that's the sponsor. Then if you go down to section two, the sentence before that, "now, therefore" be ordained by the City of Bussiers of Crawford County, Ohio, strike that. And that's it.
What about, okay, at the very last page, why is the mayor attesting to it in addition to the clerk? Because that's.
Okay, keep in mind, this legislation is always, in the past, and same as now, given to us by ODOT, state, what have you, in their own format. And this is what they have in it. And you want to prepare the legislation as they ask because one time it was not done and it was sent back.
Okay.
And not accepted by the state.
So, I'll make a motion to amend it and some of it by Vicky.
Ms. Sherrick made a motion, seconded by Mr. Spiegel, to amend resolution 226-2025 to strike Health and Safety Committee at the top, change to plating. And then before section two, the line that says "now, therefore" be ordained, completely strike that sentence. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Legislation has been amended. Moving on to resolution 226-2025 edits.
You missed 227-2025.
I'm sorry, that's what I meant. 227-2025, four edits.
Wait.
I'm looking at Vicky's email here.
227, okay.
About in the middle of the first paragraph, on the right-hand side, the January 1, 2025 is stricken. Change to July 31, 2025.
That would be the start of the term for Mr. Frizell, both on BZA and BBSA.
And then second to last, sentencing, or line in the same paragraph, striking the January 1, comma, 2025, changing to July 31, comma, 2025. And then on section one, last sent line, striking the July, the Janu, I'm sorry, January 1-2025, striking that, changing it to July 31-2025.
And will it still be December 31st?
Yes.
Okay.
And then section two, starting at the second to last line, where it says, "January 1-2025", changing to July 31, 2025. July 31, 2025. And, section three, very last line on that first page, the word "there" is misspelled. It says "T-H-E-R-E". It should be changed to "T-H-E-I-R".
Wait, section three?
The very, very last line on the page. The word "there" right in the middle of the very last line.
Yes. There's a Scrivener.
Okay, so need a motion to make those changes.
I'll move.
Question.
Wait, Mr. Law Director has a question.
Now, lawyers are notorious with bad with numbers, but if we move this to July 31, 2025, I don't think that's a four-year term.
Right.
Could be a 3.5-year term?
Let's see. So.
What do you guys wanna do with that?
I think you add in the verbiage "to complete a four-year term".
Yeah, that's good. Because that's what he's doing is.
To finish a four-year term.
It already says a pointed to four-year term.
Pointed to complete four-year term would be, that's all we have to do. So, just add the word "complete" before "four-year term".
And that would appear in three different places.
Section one, section two, also.
Section three, anyways.
In the caption, section two and section three. Or section one.
Complete a four-year term is still gonna be four years.
I was gonna say, so.
Finish existing four-year term.
Who's he replacing?
Lipscomb.
Lipscomb.
Who has done the first time.
Right, and when does, when did Lipscomb's term start?
January 1.
January 1, 2025, and when does it end? And when does it end? December 31, 2025.
2028.
So, what we could do is put "to complete a four-year term" and then leave my dates where they are, so it's still a four-year term.
But if.
Harry was on, Harry was on there as jazz of January.
And he, and he was, there were meetings since January that he attended. Or let's put it this way, that I saw emails went out to him, so I'm assuming he attended the meetings.
Aren't these supposed to be staggered?
Mrs. Slater?
They are.
May I please make a suggestion? What if it says, Adam Frizell, and this is in section one, line three, "qualified citizen of the City of Bussiers", "to fill, to fill the vacancy of a four-year term on the Board of Zoning Appeals effective July", but basically have somewhere it says a four-year term that began July, or January 1, 2025.
Just put the word "complete" in it. If, if it's legal, it fits at all, and it's just one more.
I don't see how it does.
You're just completing.
You're filling the vacancy of the term that started January 1, 2025.
Well, doesn't it mean?
Effective July 31, 2025.
Doesn't it mean commencing retroactively to January 30, to January 1?
Yeah, that will take away.
Root everything.
That takes away anything that Lipscomb did.
That's not what I'm saying retroactively. I'm stating that hereby appoints Adam Frizell to fill the vacancy of the four-year term beginning July 31, 2025.
What about the words "expired term"? That's used elsewhere.
Oh, that's true. There it is.
Why don't we just send it back to committee and you guys can figure?
Oh, no, let's just do this. To an unexpired term of four years, commencing July, and retroactively July 1, 31, 2025. Does that make sense, anyone?
Just adding the word "complete" in there. Actually, if it's a, and it's a lot less.
But if he's completing a four-year term, it's still four years.
It's to complete a four-year term.
What was the, what was the verbiage he used?
To complete an unexpired, the unexpired portion of a four-year term.
So, we've had to have this happen before where somebody was appointed midterm, and how was that legislation worded?
I don't know, we don't have a clerk that can provide us with.
Well, they should all be on a documents on demand. They should be readily available.
To complete the unexpired portion, I would.
That works.
Yeah, complete the unexpired term, four-year term.
Unexpired portion of the four-year term. Yeah, portion of a four-year term. As a member of the Board of Zoning commencing retroactively July 31 through December 31, 2028.
Does that sound legally sound?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'd like to make another motion.
Okay, is, yeah, you have to restate it.
I'd like to make another motion to add the verbiage in the caption of the unexpired four-year term with the date July 31, 2025. And again, in the caption for the zoning appeals, unexpired term, four years, July 31, 2025. We've already discussed this, I'm being vague. And section one, for it again, to say, "complete the unexpired term", the four, the unexpired four-year term in July 31, 2025, edit. And then in section two, again, for the zoning appeals, unexpired four-year term and July 31, 2025. And then in section three, "their", the Scrivener, change to "their", T-H-E-I-R. That's my motion.
Mrs. Slater made a motion, seconded by Ms. Sherrick for the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Moving on to the next one, 228-2025, four edits. And I'm looking at Vicky's, and at the top, "service committee" needs to be written across at the top right. The second paragraph, "be it resolved", that needs to be moved down and inserted below about three paragraphs and placed after the "now, therefore", and then the "now, therefore", comma, everything after it for that line is stricken.
Say that again.
I got you.
It should be "now, therefore" be it resolved by the council.
And it should be located after the whereas clauses.
Oh, so that's.
Because "be it ordained" is for an ordinance.
Be it resolved is for the.
Okay. So, the, the "be it resolved" is added right after the comma after "therefore",
Yes.
and then that existing line is stricken after that. And that's the only thing I'm seeing on the edits on this one, so if somebody wants to make a motion for those amendments.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Slater made a motion, seconded by Mr. Myers for the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. The amendment passes. Okay, did we wanna recess and get this stuff tweaked, or did we just wanna pass it and then verify before signage that the changes have been?
Oh, I'm working on them right now.
I'm okay with that, as we discussed.
Passing it as amended, we have it all written out. Make sure it's verified before being signed.
Okay, so then we're gonna move on, on the agenda. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time. The first one's been tabled indefinitely. So, we have first one, or the, the next one after that, 225-2025 Bratwurst Festival. I'm gonna let Lisa read the.
Authorizing and directing the Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Bussiers, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with the Bussiers Bratwurst Festival, Inc., to provide necessary safety forces and cleaning services at a cost of $8,000 and no cents for the 2025 Bratwurst Festival and declaring an emergency. Have to read that one out.
Now, the next resolution.
Oh, okay. 226, 2025, the following resolution enacted by the City of Bussiers, Crawford County, Ohio, here and after referred to as the city in the matter of the stated described project and declaring an emergency. Resolution 227, 2025, pursuant to Bussiers Codified Ordinance, Section 114, 1.03A, regulating the Board, Board of Zoning Appeals membership. Bussiers City Council hereby appoints Adam Frizell, presently residing at 1029 East Mansfield Street, Bussiers, Ohio, to complete the unexpired portion of a four-year term as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, commencing retroactively to July 31, 2025, through December 31, 2028, and pursuant to Bussiers Codified Ordinance, 1319. through December 31st, 2028, and pursuant to Bussiris Codified Ordinance 1319.10, regulating the Board and Building Standards and Appeals. As a member of the Board, Board of Zoning Appeals, Adam Frizell is hereby appointed to a four-year term as a member of the Board of Building Standards and Appeals, commencing...
No.
To complete the unexpired portion.
Who to what?
The unexpired portion, or the...
Appointed to a four-year unexpired term.
Appointed to the unexpired, ooh, 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 so that's gotta be the same?
Yes.
Oh, I see. Sorry. To complete the unexpired portion, a, of a, uh, to a...
Of a four-year term.
Of a four-year term as a member of the Board and Building Standards and Appeals, commencing retroactively to July 31st, 2025, through December 31st, 2028, and declaring an emergency. Resolution 228-2025, authorizing and directing the safety, Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Bussiris to enter into a contract with the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration for the grant application regarding the Port Bussiris Crawford County Airport Terminal Improvement Project and declaring an emergency.
Any motion except those of first reading?
So moved.
Mrs. Slater made the motion, seconded by Ms. Sherrick, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First reading has been accepted. Public particip, public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation as been read for the first time. Any public...
Mr. President, I have a comment.
Yes, Mrs. DeShawn.
I would like to make a statement concerning proposed Resolution 225-2025 that deals with the Broadworth's Festival. Just a matter of information for the public. The following procedure was used in arriving at the dollar amount to be paid by the Broadworth's Festival to the City of Bussiris for the safety forces and cleanup services to be provided by the city for the 2025 festival. The police, fire, and service slash street departments provided the audit, provided to Auditor Lewis, the hours worked by the departments during the 2024 Broadworth's Festival operation hours of 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. The hours, or no, I don't want to say that. The calculated figure was $17,841.11. Subsequently, I have removed the following calculated dollars when the city was informed by the festival that Rumkey was donating their services for removal of trash. And I've taken away the solid waste expense, the landfill excess expense, and 14% O-P-R, O-P-E-R-S pension attributable to the solid waste department. That brings the calculated figure down to $17,019.54. One half of that being $8,509.77. The administration and festival have agreed to the festival reimbursing the city a total of $8,000. As I have repeatedly stated, I have nothing against the Broadworth's Festival. Constituents have expressed their displeasure to me and through Facebook posts, et cetera, in having taxpayer dollars being used for the festival. In light of the city's financial situation, I have throughout this past year voted against raises for manpower, council clerk, and asked me reopen her. While I am not in agreement with the $8,000 figure negotiated by the administration and festival, I will be voting yes for the legislation which authorizes the city and festival to enter into an agreement only to ensure that the city is, is at least receiving reimbursement
Moving on, these are referred back to the originated committee. Resolution 225-2025 is back to finance. Resolution 226-2025 is referred back to platting. Resolution 227-2025 is referred back to platting. Resolution 228-2025 is referred back to service committee report on pending legislation. Finance committee.
Finance committee found proposed Resolution 225-2025 to be favorable.
Platting committee.
Resolution 226, 2025, ODOT State Route 19 South, favorable. Proposed Resolution 227-2025, Adam Frizell, BZA, BBSA, favorable.
Service committee.
Proposed Resolution 228-2025, airport terminal is in favor, service committee is in favor.
Okay.
Has emergency. Where do we need to do that part? No. I wrote it down here, so.
Okay, for the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 225-2025, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Sherrick made a motion, seconded by Ms. Slater.
You wrong called that.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 225-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Sherrick made a motion, seconded by Mr. Spiegel.
Myers?
No.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
No.
Moritz?
Yes.
Yes. Spiegel?
Yes.
Me?
Okay, so we have two no votes and five yes votes. Resolution 225-2025 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 226-2025, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion, seconded by Mrs. Slater.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick? Spiegel?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 226-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion, seconded by Mrs. Slater.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick? Spiegel?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Resolution 226-2025 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 228-2025?
227.
Nice try.
Okay, I got a question for the law director. Mr. Law Director?
Yes.
If I don't...
Mr. Finkhauser, before you start, I, may I please be excused while this conversation happens, because if this is gonna drag out any longer, I'm gonna hold...
Oh, do you need bathroom breakers?
Yes, I do.
I need one too. Let's go into a recess.
Like, two minutes is fine for me, two minutes is fine. I won't be a...
Five-minute recess at 7:48 p.m. It's 7:53 p.m. Um, okay, I was asking a question of the law director. Okay. So, you know, we've already established that the council can remove one of its members from the meeting, but it can't remove the council president. So what happens if I just don't start, I don't ask for a motion, and somebody makes a motion to adopt an ordinance and all that, and I just blatantly don't do it?
See, I thought that you were gonna ask something like that. So I dug in the rug. And I also brought case law, but I don't remember the name. It's not on the front of the bill. But, basically, the answer to your question requires a pretty in-depth legal analysis. But what we're looking for at is, you have to put, you have to ask for the motion. If you don't, somebody can point and order you. And if you don't recognize that, I think they can point and order you a second and third time and ignore it. And the member has to stand in his place and immediately put the point of order to a vote without debate. And the question may be put as, is the point of order well taken, blah, blah, blah. If the chair still ignores it, while standing in their place, put the ignored motion to a vote without debate.
So they actually have to stand up?
Correct. And that's not really the upshot, but correct. And then, we go to 6210.
Oh, can you turn your microphone on?
Yeah. And if we go to 6210, they can remove you for part of the meeting. Now, the legal question that I had on that, they can remove you, uh, let's see here. If you fail to act in accordance with Assembly's decision on an appeal or other, appeal or otherwise culpably fails to perform the duties of the chair properly in a meeting, the Assembly may employ measures temporarily to replace the chair with another presiding officer to act in accordance of the will of the Assembly. Now, the question comes down to what the ordinance, or what 731.45 says. 731.45, the higher revised code, says something along the lines of, it grants us the ability to make our own rules as a council, which we've done, and it gives the council the ability to remove somebody who is being disorderly or not following the rules. Now, under Bussiris Codified Ordinance 111.21, we've made rules for disorderly conduct. We have not made rules for not following the rules and having that as a basis for removal. And Bussiris Codified Ordinance 111.17 defers to Roberts' rules. Now, the question then remains in that Roberts' rules is the default unless otherwise provided for, including state law. Now, state law doesn't really give us an answer for removing the council president, but you are able to be removed for not following the rules in a specific meeting. The question came to the Supreme Court of Ohio as to whether or not the removal for the period of the meeting constituted removal from office. Now, 3.07 provides for, in the law, what to do when the council president is acting with nonfeasance, malfeasance, all the good things that you shouldn't do. And it says in the ordinance that if Ohio law provides for it, but what that provides for is long-term removal, which means that a short-term removal that only applies to one meeting is good to go in Roberts' rules, probably, through 628 and 6210. So I recommend that you do put it out for a motion, or, for a motion. Otherwise, they're probably going to remove you.
Well, my theory was, is that, you know how Nancy Pelosi was, you know, in Congress, she could bring up and stall out any legislation she deemed as a presiding officer?
Mr. President?
Different rules? Different rules?
Right, because in our rules and procedures, we do state that no member of council will
So I'm just, I'm not filibustering, I'm just not doing anything.
Order of the day.
All right, let's get to it. Let's see how this goes. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 228-2025?
Point of order.
What's your point?
That's not the order of the day.
Are you guys really sure you want to appoint this BZA appointment?
Yes.
Because the man threatened a lawsuit against the city.
Point of order.
Point of order, sir, you have to.
We're asking for 227-2025 to be read as stated in the agenda.
Not your personal agenda.
For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 227-2025, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Mr. Myers made the motion, seconded by Ms. Sherrick.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Yeah, someone's here, it goes.
Sherrick? Yes. Spiegel?
Yes.
Me?
Does anybody want to make a motion to table 227-2025?
No.
Mr. President?
Mr. Myers.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 227-2025.
Don't we need discussion first?
No, after the motion's on the table.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Myers made a motion to adopt ordinance 227-2025. It was seconded by Mrs. Slater, is there any discussion?
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick? Yes. Spiegel?
Yes.
Me?
Now, what happens, Mr. Gober, Mr. Gober, if I don't say that it's duly adopted? What happens then?
Uh, well, you'll find yourself running afoul of 3.07, probably. And also, while we're on the subject, quit signing under protest on the stuff. You're supposed to sign it, and there's case law to support the fact that you're supposed to sign it. You're just supposed to sign it, whether you agree with it or not.
I'm going to announce that Resolution 227-2025 is duly adopted, but I'm in protest of it.
Point of order.
Mrs. Slater.
Your personal opinion of it is irrelevant. The administrative function that you so like to announce frequently is to administer the meeting, and once we direct you to do something, it is to be done.
Okay, moving on, for the second, third reading of proposed Resolution 228-2025?
Point of order, what's your ruling on that?
I'm ruling that we're moving on.
Right, no, I'm saying, what is your ruling about stating protesting? State that's improper, it should be stricken from the record.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
My point of order is that in protest should not be stated on the record. That is not your decision.
Okay, is there any objection by unanimous consent to strike the in protest that I stated at the end of that?
No.
You all, all you have to say...
You have to rule on the motion.
You have to rule on the motion. Did it be stricken from the record or not, yes or no?
Yes, it's stricken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 228-2025, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Ms. Sherrick was the first on that, seconded by Mrs. Slater.
Myers?
Yeah.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick? Yes. Spiegel?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 228-2025?
So moved.
Um, Mr. Spiegel was the first, it was seconded by Mr. Myers.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick? Yes. Spiegel?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Resolution 228-2025 is duly adopted. Nobody's absent, needs excuse, I need a motion to adjourn. Nobody's absent, needs excuse, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Myers made a motion, seconded by Ms. Sherrick, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, we're adjourned at 8:04 p.m.